Mark, is there more to do than just click the start record button?
I left when...
Okay, well, I just did that.
Yeah.
So.
Well.
She said she could share innovation.
Who did?
I assume she can.
She has.
And I'll get to fight a lot of things.
Right, so you could say.
We don't have the same advantage.
Ten goals to keep up with.
Yeah. Fifteen now blocking my access.
Do we do or you don't?
Well, yeah, we're in pro land. Okay, Mark.
Yeah.
Who's it? Who is this? Oh, you are here. There's it. You're here.
I had a virus and had a fever. It was weird because it's very rare for me to get to be in the fever.
Washington is a great travel in Washington. Just spend the day on the hill.
Well, I'm glad to be here.
There's like one to three blocks straight from there.
You didn't have a hygiene.
To plan my trip.
You should feel better today.
Michael, anything new?
No. Yeah. I have a special offer for you. Maybe come to the joint night tomorrow or do something with them.
So we're ready.
I like it. Two hundred and eighty. You know, this fire thing. What's enough? It's not your problem. Have it up in there. Just a question.
What we should probably get is the best aspect.
Oh, that's good. It's not a great people. Love you.
Cor, the city council being present, this meeting will now come to order. This is a roundtable working meeting relating to the zoning petition filed by MIT called MITQUD5. No public comments will be taken and no votes will be taken and the meeting will not be televised by CCTV. So at this time, I'm the mayor and I have convened this meeting, duly convening the meeting, I believe. And as it's a working session of the rounding ordinance matter, it's my intention at this time to turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Ordinance Committee, David Moore, to help us run the discussion.
Mayor, could you announce that it is being recorded?
Uh.
Not by you, but it is. Because it is, so.
Certainly. Not officially being recorded, but the press has allowed the permission to, of course, to, and without interrupting our process, not again, to record and that's what is happening here. For those of you who may see the recorded version of this. So, Councilor Moore, I think that we're informal here and you know, you might want to manifest, but yeah, I hear is that we'll have a chance to respond to a lot of what we've heard from the public at multiple meetings and we are hearing in emails and we're hearing, we've heard at our regular meetings, we've heard at ordinance committee meetings and we haven't had an opportunity to process that. And under our rules, QPD5 can't do that without doing that in a meeting that's called as an official meeting and that's this roundtable. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to just take a quick minute to welcome Hugh Russell, who is the Chair of the Planning Board, who was here with us this morning and I thought it was important for the council to have the opportunity to talk with Hugh and get the perspective of the Planning Board, as I know that you folks spent a great deal of time. In addition, the manager, I had asked the city manager to have ready for today really the summary of the tax implications of the proposed project. We also have with us Iran and Stuart and Roger from CBD, as well as Jeff and Chris Clotter from Housing, who will be able to answer questions and help us with the dialogue that we have today. I do want to just mention that David Manfredi, who is the architect who has been working on this project, is with us for a limited time. So if there were questions specific to David, I would ask that people ask those questions early as he does a prior commitment. And with that, I am going to ask Steve Marsh to give us a quick overview and update and then we will be taking, as the mayor said, informally questions back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Jim. We really appreciate the opportunity to join you today. Looking forward to a helpful productive discussion here. I just want to mention housekeeping matter. We are having our open house tomorrow from 10 to 12 and next Tuesday from 6 to 8 at the States at Mount Broadway next to Five Grand Stains where we do have a couple other models and some visuals that might help people better understand some of the finer details of our petition and we'll be working on those. We're still continuing to work on them, but they might be helpful, we thought, to the members here and the public. I'd like to quickly just introduce the folks with me tonight, I mean today. Israel Ruiz, our Executive Vice President, Treasurer. Professor Marty Schmidt, Associate Provost. Michael Wu was with me as well. And Sarah Galloway and David Manfredi are also here today, as you mentioned, David doesn't leave. Just some basic comments. I think today helps us frame some of the information we've received over the last several months since we filed our second petition. The new petition, which was shaped by the Planning Board, was significantly changed by the work that we did with both the community and the planning board through, I think we had ten meetings at the Planning Board when I was looking back on it. I'm happy to see you here today, but I think it helps in conversations. You know, most importantly, I think the basis of my decision not to move forward with the original petition was to respond to city council issues mainly around the desire for robotics abuses in our petition and frankly, to think deeper about how the petition intersects with the community. I think we spent an enormous amount of time in the eighteen to twenty months that followed in the community with the Planning Board and hearing members of council's concerns. And we've come forward with help of the Planning Board and the community that we believe is a much better petition today. Over the course of the three public ordinance committee meetings, we also learned that the council, that we need to focus and refine other aspects of our petition and we're working to do that as we speak. Some areas we've heard from the council, I mentioned grad housing, one. The council reiterated what we've already heard from our task force, which was undertaken by the Provost at the request of the President, that we needed to take a deep look at grad and housing from multiple perspectives and that is underway at this point in time. Since this study was announced, the council and the members of the MIT community have helped us move that study forward and refine our thinking about both timetable for that study and its direction. Both Israel and Marty can speak more to that after Hugh's comments. Just another component that we thought was important to address, retail. We think we've developed a very exciting vision for Kendall Square and I think we're delighted to share that with folks and excited about what we'll do to the area. But we have a question, well, how do we make sure this really happens as we say it will? You know, our large scale model that's down on Broadway highlights some of the retail open space opportunities. We developed this to help us understand what would happen at the street level and to think about the retail mix at a more grander level. So again, that is a model that we're continuing to refine, but we're happy to share that work in progress and it helps people understand it better. We recently heard from the council that we needed to focus more on sort of the teeth of our retail and open space activation. The base zoning that we have here has both requirements for open space and activation criteria and the zoning sets new precedents on a number of these items, including incentives for smaller and increased retail uses, activated street frontage, but referred to the council, this may need to go even further. Just some of the comments I've heard recently. One councilor noted the need for a grocery store near the community and wanted to ensure that the type of retail is diverse and locally based. We've heard that time and time again. Another council spoke passionately about programming the active spaces in the district with community friendly activities and we get that. We've been focusing on that, we're taking that very seriously and we're working to address those deeper issues that come with here. Making sure that there's child friendly activities even for Saturday's open house was a request, so we're making sure that we're doing that for Saturday. But I think this is an example of what the council community sees and has asked us in terms of an attitude overall with Kendall Square, a lot of inclusiveness, making sure that we're making this an inviting place for all of us. So we realize that this can only be successful if we continue to talk and to listen to the council and the surrounding community about how this evolves in Kendall Square and make sure that it works for all of us. Another item that we talked about was referring as the mix of units. Generally, these Cambridge, Cambridge for whole. There are thousands of units coming online that I know around and have spoken to that issue before. We continue to hear excitement about one Broadway, our housing there, which we refer to as Innovation Landing, but referred from the council, we need to be clearer about the type of housing community that will be and, you know, as it sets precedence for others going forward in the Kendall area. We've heard that and we want to be clear that the housing community will offer low, moderate and market units. We will range from bedroom sizes from micro units and innovation units to three family units. High end count and the configuration that we have here will allow us to be multifaceted in the site. I think we can really look at it as something that we can offer something for everyone in this district and we believe that we will all be proud of that part execution. It will be a precedent and we will learn from this experience as we pioneer some of these new mixes. Marty and Israel will speak a little bit about housing issues at MIT and we'll add some more detail to that conversation as well. And we know that Cambridge, what Cambridge does affects MIT and what MIT does affects Cambridge and I think that synergy is really important. I think it's a key theme that we've learned and thought about throughout the entire planning process of Kendall, particularly where we see this as really a mixing bowl for the community. Workforce issues was another area. We've heard a lot about from the council and workforce issues. The mayor asked for jobs reported today and we will provide some information on that. And we all recognize that Kendall Square as an economic engine is amazing, but we've also come to realize that all of us have to do a better job of connecting that engine to the broader community. I've heard that theme time and time again. Because of that challenge, the council's direction, we began talking with building trades about how construction jobs can relate to jobs for Cambridge community residents. And this is just one example of what we and you can do together to create a pipeline and help residents connect directly to the Kendall Square experience. The city of Cambridge works very hard in this regard, but I believe that all will develop more direct relationships to the residents. I think, as you heard last week, Marty was also president of Metro Boston Trades Council, committed to a pathways to apprenticeship program here in Cambridge. And MIT will help create and maintain that program. Boston residents have benefited from such a program for years and it's time that the construction occurs here relates directly to the opportunity for Cambridge residents. So we'll continue to work on that and we'll have more details on that with Marty shortly. Just on the community fund, generally, we've heard good things about the community fund. It's fairly straightforward. It focuses on the areas referred the most about from this community based process and that is open space, workforce development and transit. The framework came from the K2 community process, but things like membership of the fund committee and credit for improvements that MIT may do on work on other properties have been brought up and we're thinking about that and any concerns that people have. So we know this piece will evolve with the changes that we suggested there. In closing, we've heard a lot about a number of other issues and we're working very hard and I'm sure we'll have more today as we continue the dialogue. Some of them are complex, others are more basic, but we think the process will result in a far better product, in fact, I think it already has. So I wanted to say that we have a number of folks here today and we're looking forward to these diverse perspectives and hopefully some of them. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I just wonder if you're planning to structure the conversation around topics or just how you might be doing that? I know that I'm certainly interested in the community benefits aspect, but you've indicated that maybe we should defer talking about that as well after we talk about design issues. But are there some big topics we could kind of work topically around rather than everybody throwing out their ideas as we cuss in our own way?
Yeah, I wanted to get to Hugh and then I wanted to have a run, just touch on a couple of things that were just said by Steve and then kind of move to questions if that makes sense. But, and I don't mean to put you right on the spot right away, Hugh, but if you could just help the council understand the perspective of the planning board and the process of the planning board. I'm just kind of throwing this out there and saying that some people have suggested that the process has been rushed and can you kind of address that aspect of the perception?
I'll do my best. I guess I will. I would start in 24. When they set body, they post as only those regulations in the city. And Kendall Square is only, didn't change very... And Kendall Square, as I mean, didn't change very much in the city until, ultimately recently. The industry of these, I don't want to cover it much, but it's an 85 district, was intact in the year 2000. Of course, the area changed enormously from being a very mobile and active industrial district to now a district that's, it's one of the oldest characteristics.
Hugh, could you speak really in my room for me? I know I'm probably the one who has the hardest time hearing, but...
Right, I have the hardest time speaking.
We don't have to talk about that.
So...
Thank you.
The council and the city engaged in a rezoning effort about a dozen years ago called Citywide Res zoning. And at that time, we looked, there was the East Cambridge Planning Study, which covered this area, and we determined that the best thing to do, we're worried about the impacts of new developments, so we actually reduced the permitted development density in Kendall Square by almost exactly the amount that is on the table today to increase it. And so what we've learned in the last 12 years is that we've been very successful in doing many things in Kendall Square. We're attracting, you know, the world's best biotech industry. We have argued with the world's best technological institution that's been there for nearly 100 years. We have another fabulous institution in Harvard Square. That energy has produced an enormous amount of activity, growth, and contributions to As councillor Reeves started pointing out to us quite many years ago, the physical reality of Kendall Square has not kept up with the intellectual activity. So what's happening now, from my point of view, and I think it's the first one here, is we have the opportunity to see what we can, how we can improve what's there, how we can, and tweak is perhaps a little small word, but how do we adjust what we're doing to encourage the best possible things to happen? And I'm not going to hand you that list because I think maybe you know what that list is. Steve covered many of those points, and it's up to you, Mark. The Planning Board views this as an extremely important matter. We think that general resunings in the city are the most important work we do. This is a very important area. And the Kendall Square, Central Square study that you initiated several years ago was an enormous contribution because it meant that the city went out and engaged in a formal process with a lot of upside up to really dig in and then get to the bottom of things. But that was a couple years ago. That's when we started. The giant pile of paper here, this stack is just the MIT stack, and the rest of the notebook is the rest of the area. My first piece of paper here is dated 2010, it's now 2013. We've been moving along. I don't think it will be precipitously by any means. We're moving deliberately, carefully consulting people, everybody who's interested and listening. So I think it's time to act on what we can do now and move forward to complete this study, complete this like recommendations. So that's what we're at. I hope you will act on this favorably, as we've studied it for a long time. We're very happy with the MIT piece of it, and we're very happy with the design guidelines. That is a parallel activity that goes along and will affect the entire district. We're also anxious to move on to both Central Square and to the other areas of this district that have impacted and reduced design coverage.
If you might also just, on the subject that Steve mentioned, the kind of the pipeline of housing that is being currently built in the city, if you can shed some light on the numbers and the types of housing that are coming onboard.
Sure. Am I actually going to ask Stuart to respond to that?
Okay, we had, this question came up as well, about the council and the Planning Board, the housing that's not only available very close to this area, which we also realize the value of creating a sense of place, creating matches with workers who want to be right down the street, but also the overall housing that's in the city. And we took a look back at the last about 12 years since 2006 rezoning that Hugh talked about, and if many people here remember the Citywide Res zoning, at that time, when we reduced the commercial, allowed commercial development in the city, almost one-third across the whole city, we left the density of housing alone at that time, giving the preference to housing development across the city. And at that time, we were looking very carefully at the jobs housing balance in the city and thinking about what was the appropriate level for Cambridge to be at to do its fair share regionally for housing, considering the amount of jobs they had. And over this period of the last 1000 years, we've improved that balance, and people may not guess that, but we've actually produced a number of over 4,000 units, I think it is. And this map shows in, I don't know if you can see, but in a series of dots, the blue dots are housing projects that have been completed since 2001, and the small ones are smaller numbers, and the large ones are over 300 and above. The large ones are ones that are in construction right now, so you'll see actually the faces side up is an orange one up in Route 2. And the tiny, tiny properties, one Kendall Square shows up as orange. And permanent, and for you two, we've shown a north point with some pretty large red dots there, and they remain there as large red dots, as in permanent, having been permanent a number of years ago after the East Cambridge study, but the fact there is, they are starting construction now on a very large project there called Building 10.
Ron, would you mind moving it around so that the public can see? The ones watching from home?
As soon as Stuart stops pointing to it, I'll turn it around.
The gray dots are also our commercial development, so in this map, we tried to sort of disfocus on the housing. And the, and permanent, the number of both about 1,000 units out in the Elway area, and that's due, it's a small measure to the Congress of Elway rezoning that the council did in 2006, I think it was. So as we looked at the number of housing units, nor the hence for a study we thought about, not only how many jobs, how many housing units were within walking distance, and within walking distance, we looked at not only the very tiny little sort of quarter miles or a reasonable sort of 15-minute walk, and that gets you to closer to the north point, gets you up towards Central Square, gets you to the Osborne Triangle, and not only Kendall Square. And look at that as sort of the larger reasonable universe for housing for Kendall Square.
Lit, may I do a question?
Thanks. I guess you mentioned that, I guess the architect was the one that had the negroes, which I can, questions for both, but I...
David's trying to hang on the corner.
Before I get to that, I think so, just before I get to this stuff, I'm trying to see and still see improved in this petition, I wanted to just acknowledge how far, how much this petition has changed over just the past couple of months. Been really pleased, I guess in terms of the retail, very pleased that, we know, we had an issue earlier on with Red Cross and setback and help potential development, and here one Broadway might impact their building. Very pleased that that's been changed, very pleased with the capital overall parking, innovation space that's changed from the previous petition, although we're still asking for more on that. I think that the, there's a lot that the petition has come forward on, most notably, I think I've been pressing all the one position of housing, both graduate student housing and postdoc housing, and very pleased that Professor Clay was named to head up the committee, the task force, on doing a very comprehensive study on housing. I've gone and spoken with him, and he outlined his methodology, and explained a bit of it to people in the room, and bringing on to the task force people from all the different walks of life that are part of the MIT community, also the grad students, the grad students with children, the grad students with spouse but not children, postdocs, and then really looking at not only what they say they want, but what they've done in terms of their housing decisions since coming to the institute. I think the, can't articulate, fully articulate the entire methodology, I think he's the expert, I'm not, but I was very pleased that there is going to be a very robust and thoughtful process around looking at this issue, which I've been concerned about the whole time I've known the council, what to do about housing, the grad student population, and making sure that we're not just giving money to grad students to go out and compete with residents and the rest of Cambridge. So very pleased, I was very pleased to be in my discussion with him, Mr. Chairman, and hear just how seriously he thinks this charge. Also, Sam, I'm extremely pleased that just announced that he's going to, allow the city to designate a liaison to interface with that committee, to facilitate communication between the city, to help make the process to the city, to the residents more transparent, to make sure that the city's concerns, how the impacts that MIT's approach to housing can have back on the residents of Cambridge. I know that this is a very significant departure from the status quo for what MIT does, to invite somebody from the city on to what has previously been certainly an internal MIT-only process and deliver process. So I'm very pleased with this, and to be honest, I think to Mr. Chairman, I think this marks with this new administration, a new day, a new approach, and a new commitment to partnership with the city. So I think that this is a, this is a huge step forward, cannot be understated. So I'm very pleased with that. I think I'm still pressing you on the innovation space and the amount of innovation space, what we're doing for entrepreneurs, for middle-sized companies, but I know that this, you know, we're not at the finish line yet, so I wanted to take a moment just to recognize the progress that we've done. Also, very pleased as well on the, I was making notes here, the apprenticeship program. We've been pressing for a while on how do we get more Cambridge residents into the building trades, and I think so much commercial, so much proposed, developed in proposal, I think we can not just about what is going to be built, but how it's going to be built. Very pleased that the pathways to apprenticeship has been so well thought through. I guess my question then goes to the architect. One of the issues I've talked about previously was, I think, the design of the buildings, and more importantly, the design of the buildings to the residential footprint, how people, this is the retail, how people walk through, may interact with the buildings, and may feel the buildings, I guess going back to the, the way that you're segmenting the buildings so that they don't feel like it's just one big model of a thing. I don't know if you can talk also about how the building meets the ground, and some of the innovative things that may be happening around there. And I think that the other thing I was wanting to specifically ask was, still on this MIT cross-building, I think still passing, I know that's more on a city, more decision for the city council than it is for you, but I think you could talk a little bit about the 100 square feet and why, I guess the plaza being 100 square feet, why, what the impact is on pedestrians strolling through, and why that's an ideal number. And then I guess, this is a random call, I don't know if there's any thoughts of you trying to get to that 100 feet, could you keep like half the damagingness building, or is that not a proper question? I don't know if that's even a reasonable question to ask about, did you have interest in that? Thank you.
Thank you. You've added three or four different questions in there, so let me try to take...
Mike, I'm going.
Several.
Should I have a green one?
This one. Let me start, and I think especially you, Russell, has heard me say this several times, and I think the council has as well. I think that a lot of modern architecture has failed the street, meaning that modern buildings very often hit the street in a way that is not particularly pedestrian-friendly. And I think that we have an obligation here, as in no other place, to change that, to do that in a very positive and direct way. And we've talked with the Planning Board exactly what does that mean, those are nice words, but what does that mean? And I think what it means is that we've got, and we have some very specific, specific design guidelines around having setbacks above second or third or fourth floor, and letting the architect change as it comes down to the street, and accommodate retail in a way that it's not ancillary to the building at all. And what modern architecture has very often done in urban settings is beautiful, sleek, modern buildings, coming to the ground, and then in a very ancillary kind of way, plugging in retail in that space that was best in their kind of planning. What we love about our cities, the best parts of our cities is the kind of organic growth, the kind of diversity, and I always say the kind of messiness about these streets. We love streets being a little bit messy. You know, think about the best retail streets you know, and even think about streets like, you know, in Boston, Cambridge, they have a smaller scale, they have, there's a diversity of storefronts from one tenant to the next because the identity of the individual purveyor, whether he's making tacos or selling scarves, or it's a hardware store, they take on an identity that's in your mind, and it creates a human pedestrian kind of scale. Maybe that's one story, maybe that's two stories, maybe storefronts are woodlapper, maybe storefronts are brick, but they're different, and they read a scale. And those of you who have seen, and I think everybody has seen, the kind of conceptual merchandising plans, the thought is these buildings will have multiple tenants on the ground floors, that the entrance to the office or science space above will actually be very small. And there's some very good guidelines around that, meaning that a very high percentage of ground floors retail, that there are multiple tenants, that there's multiple doorways, that these storefronts are not only transparent, but even awful, you know, that restaurants can spill out, merchandise can spill out. That's what activates and makes good streets. And I think that, you know, these buildings are going to house the most advanced, potentially house some of the most advanced science in the world, and yet they're, and so they want to be modern buildings, and yet at the street they want to be pedestrian scaled storefronts and street fronts and have a scale of 23 feet of storefront, not 200 feet of storefront. That's what makes the pedestrian neighborhoods that we really like. You asked about the gateway portal, and we have studied this a lot over the last You asked about the gateway portal, and we have studied this a lot over the last couple of years, and we've studied it, I think everybody knows, we've studied it with the MIT press building in place, and we've studied it with the MIT press building removed, and we've studied different versions in between. And, and the idea of a partial building is not a crazy idea, it's a, it's an idea frankly that we studied. And, and I think that all of those things are, are possible, they have a series of different kinds of ripple effects. And the 100 feet that you're referring to, if, if, here's kind of the, the broad metrics of it. If you look at what's there today, the T headhouse sits right at where we, right at the head-on axis of Carlton Street, and that's kind of the, the axis that leads you into campus and connects to the Infinite Corridor, in which MIT truly wants to make open and welcoming to everybody, everybody in that Kendall Square community, as well as the surrounding community. The dimension today from that headhouse to the MIT press building is 20 feet. You all know what it looks like, it looks like an alley. And the, our first, our, we, as you know, we've designated seven different building parcels, all of which correspond to surface parking lots. What we call parcel two, which is the building that would be on the Cambridge saving site and surface parking lots, if you, when you, when you lay out the footprint of that building, and then for a moment, remove the, the headhouse building to the feet, the dimension you get to the MIT press building is about 65 feet, and I know some people have thought that was too tight, that it wasn't significant enough of a portal as an entry, as a gateway, as, as symbolic front door, or second front door to the, to the institute. One of the things here is that, you know, MIT enjoys some extraordinary icons, in the dome, in Killeen Court, in Infinite Corridor, and so the obligation is to step up and do something of, of equal memorability. And so what we, what we've looked at, if, if, in fact, you keep the MIT press building, you build a new building on our site too, and you have that 65 feet, maybe you have to remove the headhouse, maybe you have to put it in the building, then you evaluate is 65 feet enough dimension, is that big enough portal? If you completely remove the MIT building, now you're up around over 120, 130 feet, and it's probably too wide. And the reason I say that is, not that it's too wide as an urban gesture, it's too wide, I, in my opinion, and, and you've got some very good other opinions here at the Thel Urban Design Opinion, that we can keep it activated on a regular basis. You know, you think about, again, think about great spaces, and we've got lots of comparisons, you want a connection between the sides of these kinds of urban piazzas, you want them to, the activities to spill out and to activate on Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock, as well as Friday in summer at 7 o'clock, when you've got, you know, 1,000 people there. So we said, I said, that, you know, that 100-foot dimension is a very nice dimension, it's a very nice metric, it can accommodate lots of activity, you can think of all sorts of things you can put in there, from a programmatic point of view, across the year, from food to book fairs, to farmers markets, to music, to movies, to all kinds of things. Gets too big, it's, it, it loses its intensity, gets too small, it's not on an appropriate scale. So that, that, that's really kind of the big overview, and, and that's really the task that is being undertaken by, by this group led by faculty, that will look at all of those possibilities. I think many of you have seen the ones that we've created with MIT, without, with MIT press, without MIT press, and, and we have looked at those things in between. And, and, and it's, I think it's a complex planning issue, it's not a simple solution, it's not, it's not even either or, I think there's things in between, you know, I think you can think about, think about MIT press transformed, the ground plane totally transformed, and the ground plane of the press building, and the exterior space merging, and making it alterable, and expanding. I think what's important is, the most important thing is, that, that it's inviting, that it's, you know, portal can be open and welcoming, or portal can be exclusive and, and, and varied, and clearly the intent here is open and welcoming, and it's not just we're making space, we're leading to the spaces beyond, it's a network of spaces. There's this piazza, there's the connection to the Infinite Corridor, Infinite Corridor leads to Wadsworth, Wadsworth leads to the river, Wadsworth leads back to Third, Third leads to, to the Broad Canal. It's that, it's that network that we're really about, and we don't want to build walls, we don't want to make portals that are, that are barriers and kind of exclusivity in any way, we want to make welcoming openings. It's a, it's a, it's a very challenging and very interesting and exciting urban design problem. And I think that the, you know, the real message is, you know, designers, planners, architects, we live in a world of multiple solutions, and I think that this exercise that's about the launch is really about broad view, be open-minded, think of all the possibilities, don't think of, don't narrow it, that yes, MIT press is in, or MIT press is out, MIT press is transformed, partially removed, reinvented, made a little bit smaller, thought of as a canvas for all sorts of technology, all of those things, I'm sure will be part of the study if that happens. I'm not sure I got, I think I, I think I covered all of the things that you were asking about.
Can I follow one of the...
There's two questions over this point, and for those of you who didn't hear when we started, David has to leave very soon, so we asked if people had questions about, from the architect, that they asked them early on, so do you mind if we...
Yeah, no, I'll say my questions about that in order to be, that's actually...
So Heather, you had a really...
Okay, so I'm really glad to hear you talking in very important terms about this, I love hearing you say piazza, you know, the idea that this gateway is an active space, and it's really important to get it right, and make it workable for as many hours of the day and night as it seems useful to aim for. And just one of my, my concerns right off was that that space might be, at this point, way too narrow, and then when I suddenly realized the headhouse dropped in there, I thought, there is no space, the headhouse takes it up. So, so I just want to make sure that when, whatever we pass in zoning allows that plaza, courtyard, whatever you want to call it, entryway, that, you call it the entryway at MIT, but I think of it as a public courtyard for the, for the entire city, and the entire Kendall area. So in that, in that vein, I, one of the things that I immediately saw in the model was something that made it look to me like the building, I don't know what you call it, is that number one, building number one that's next to the savings bank, constrains the Main Street interest. And so, and even in your language, I have to say, I heard you talk about how things connect up within Kendall, how it connects to the Infinite Corridor, but I didn't hear the connection down Main Street. And I think that is very significant, and something that I'm concerned about, I don't know if you've looked at what having that one building, is that the number, what do you call number one building?
No, it's number two.
Number two building. That, that comes right up to the, to the sidewalk, the sidewalk, I don't know if it's thought to be getting any bigger, if the, or if, as you look down Main Street, you see one building coming in this way, and another building, which actually on the other side I think has a better step back, apartments, if that's what, you know, where the legal seatroom building and what's going to be Google actually steps back, this building on the land inside comes right into the, right up against the sidewalk. And I'm very concerned that that building is unfriendly to our connections from Central to Kendall, that it starts to close off the area instead of being welcoming, and I wonder if you've thought about that.
Yeah, you make an excellent point, Mayor, about Main Street as being primary, and you're actually right, it is primary, everything comes off of Main Street, Main Street is the core. And then we, then we think about all of the connections to all of these other places, but if you don't get Main Street right, you know, we miss it, and you're right, Main Street is clearly the core. One of the very good things that's happening in a, on a parallel track is the replanning of Main Street, the metrics of Main Street, and the plan as it is now actually removes the median in Main Street, creates, there is parallel parking today, but it actually creates more parallel parking, which I think is a very good thing for pedestrian environment, and it makes the sidewalks wider.
To what, do you know what the number is?
It varies block to block, but it's, at a minimum, I believe 16 feet, and I think it actually gets wider in some places.
16?
16, no, that's, that's building to fit, to curve.
So actually, what I'd like after this meeting is to see the sidewalk, what are the sidewalks like as you come, say, from, from Tech Square, you know, what are we looking at, the sidewalks, and setbacks of buildings, so that that corridor, you have a sense of that corridor, and now, and I hope I'm wrong, that, that right now it just looks like it just, that one building just really pushes into it and takes away the sense of grandness on the boulevard that you might have in the corridor. I'm sure there are ways to accommodate your buildings by dealing with that issue, but I, I don't want to see, I don't see how you can cut off Kendall Square from, from Central Main Street, because you have all those other buildings that are doing things, but it's pretty hodgepodge going back past the Broad and the, and Lighthead, and if you don't tie all that stuff together, I think you're missing, you're missing an opportunity, and certainly a welcome. I mean, the gate, it's not just a gateway to MIT we're talking about, though, I think that that's a truly wonderful idea, we're talking about a gateway from the rest of the city to Kendall. And you've got gateways coming from Boston, but within the city, we're, we want to be welcoming also to get to Kendall, and I want to make sure we've thought about that, we have all thought about that, we've sort of carefully, and not, and not inadvertently said, this place is kind of walled off. So that was one, actually, that was one and two of my questions, and there was, and maybe this isn't something that I need to ask you, but one other kind of design question that was raised by a letter that we got from Carol here, of here, was about the heights along the river. And right now, there are certain heights along the river, and it's something, I'm not sure what this zoning does exactly to the heights along the river, and how they change, what are expectations are of those kinds of heights? So, and I know that at this point, yeah, so, I don't know, is that a question for you?
I could probably add a comment on that. I think in the zoning regime that we put forward, the heights were intentionally organized to step down to the river, where the height proposed in the district along the river is 150 feet, today that district is 120. For, for practical purposes, if you can, give me some perspective, I think One Memorial Drive, which is on, which starts that, is about 240 feet, so...
But it's not wire, it's not wire on the edge there, it's like...
So we're studying that, obviously dramatically from, from that. I think we're just, obviously finished our Sloan building, we have an empty little building that's down there, we have a really historic building, we have a very historic building, or a building of historic interest at, at Sloan. We have President's House, which is presumably a historic building, and Senior House, there are a number of structures there that I think will, will be as they are going forward. I think the opportunity may be slightly behind these, or with some of the buildings that may be, may be not so historically oriented. And the thought process was that might be something along there that bumps up a little bit more than 120 feet, and that was the intention of how we sort of designed that district going forward. So I think we're very concerned, I think we've been, you know, really have been stewards of making sure that Memorial Drive and the river have been very thoughtful in our preparation of, of any space along there over time, and I think we're very proud of what we've done at Sloan School as well. The notion that there might be some variety and the opportunity to reconfigure the floor plates, where some of the frankly, not that hospitable today, you know, I think 100 Memorial Drive, it was designed with its back foot to Kendall Square and block off of the river. You know, in the future, at some point in time, that could change, maybe there's a way to cover the forest, but that might come in exchange for bumping up one element of it, in order to get some more transparency through the space there. That was the intention, try to create some flexibility to enable some, some movement in that area, so I think that was, that's the notion.
Thank you.
Maybe, and then if there's any other, I want to respect your time, and I hear we're going, we're going on to where you are, so if there's anybody else, there's a quick question for Dave after that, but otherwise, yeah, you have a quick question.
So these are just comments related to, actually, the first question that you answered of Councilor Chung, which had to do with how do you activate the first-floor retail space? So I think we can all agree, well, maybe I shouldn't say that, that One Kendall, as it is right now, has huge sidewalks on the, on the Broadway side, and aside from Five Grand Saints, I don't know that anyone would really say that that's really activated retail. And part of that is the location right there, busy coming off the bridge, you know, all those sorts of things, but it was kind of planned, what was, what was built was planned with an eye towards, this is set up so that it could become activated space along the Broadway side, along the Third Street side, but it didn't really work, except for Five Grand Saints, which was recent. But when you go around the backside of the building, I don't know if that little thing is called by Broad Canal, but that's...
Broad Canal Way.
Broad Canal Way, okay, when you go along there, there's, you know, zero, there's nothing, there's a parking garage, it's, and then on the other side of, of Broadway, One Canal Way, again, there's that attempt with the huge sidewalk, so that Zaha can spill out onto the, and that works, except unfortunately they're looking at the back of the parking. So it's really exciting to me that there's so much effort put into how you activate that One Kendall Square, One Broadway block. So I'm going to challenge you, I know that you've built quite a lot of buildings in Cambridge, so I want to hear from you an example of something where you, as the architect, have been able to design the first floor, or the, you know, one, the two floors of the building, so that it's just completely conducive to being an active pedestrian experience. So in Cambridge, where have you, where do you view the success of the architect being able to activate the first floor?
Sure. First, I think you make a very good point, sidewalks can be too wide, and if they're not populated with enough activity, they can be too wide and, and they dissipate energy rather than collect energy, and we want to collect energy. Now, I can show you some places around the country where wide sidewalks, where streets have been taken over and created very wide sidewalks, and it works great because there's Lincoln Road in, in South Beach is a great example, where all of the seating came out away from the storefronts, they occupy a lot of space, there's a lot of energy, and it's, and it's very successful. But what you're pointing to in front of One Broadway, in front of Watermark, those are wide, very wide sidewalks, and it's been hard for everybody to, to really generate the activity, that, the sense of energy that you really want there. So I, there is a, I think there is a kind of sweet spot, and this isn't all about restaurants, and it's also about retail, it's about shops, it's about diversity of things, and so I think you can, too wide can be, can be not, is not necessarily better. I think the best thing about Broad Canal Way is, we're taking something, we propose to take something that's one-sided and make it two-sided, and that's transforming. The best retail, even find examples, but the best retail in the world is two-sided, and it has this kind of oscillation from side to side. Think about the best shopping streets in the world, they're always, almost always two-sided. So, so challenge me to my, to where that has worked. I guess the best example I can think of in a modern building is the, where Flower and the bottle shop have come at the basic 200-mass ad. It took a long time to get there, but what they have done is, they're both well-designed shops, we have nothing to do with the design of the shops, but, but they're, they're not too deep, you can see the back, they're, Flower takes their tables outside, the wine store is, is well-illuminated, so it activates the edge, there's a kind of scale that keeps your eye down to the first floor. Now, I won't, I won't say that that's the best you can do, I think you can do much better than that. I think, you know, where we get, where the... I think, you know, where we get, where to defend my profession, where we get in trouble is that very often corporate users are trying to make a corporate statement with architecture. And I think what MIT is saying, and I'm thrilled about it, is we've got a commitment to the street here. And so we don't have to make this statement that comes to the ground and have a brand entry. We're going to dedicate, the ground floor of these buildings is going to belong to the street in its use and its architecture and its permeability and all of those things. That's a, you know, to me, that's an incredibly welcomed and refreshing point of view. You know, not all developers will think that way and not all corporate users will think that way because they have different agendas for what they want architecture to do. And I think what you're getting here is an agenda that says making place is at the top of our list. And making place means diversity and messiness at the ground level. I mean, we like, we like cities that are a little bit messy, that are a little bit disorganized, where every awning isn't the same as every other, every glade sign isn't the same as every other.
I don't know if I would call that messy, I would call that interesting. And I would agree about perhaps the sidewalk in front of the heart of One Broadway may be too big, especially in the winter when you can't really sit out there. But it also gives you use for, you know, the hubways, stations, you know, so there are other things that you can put in there. Your example of the Navarre's Building on Mass Ave, you know, the central bottle and there's Flower, is probably an example of the sidewalk that's too small. Because it's, you know, it's not pleasant to be sitting outside in the street with the cars going by. So there's probably some sweet spot, I don't know exactly what that is, but we haven't hit it. But I didn't hear an answer to my question about something that you, as an architect, have been able to create that embodies what we're trying to capture with this liveliness on the first floor.
Well, I'll tell you, my best examples are not going to be Boston, Cambridge examples. My best example is if you're looking specifically for art.
Well, this is international, so we can go further.
Yeah, not international, but it's a nice trip. Work we've done in Los Angeles, at The Grove in Los Angeles, where there's all of that diversity, and you'll find it, you know, there's a website. And it does go to all these things I'm talking about in terms of open space and public ground as part of the pedestrian experience. And I think, I want to come back because I think you're getting at the same thing the mayor's getting at. We've got to think about this as common ground. We've got to think about this as where all of these different things come together. That's what's going to make it really.
So you've built so much in Cambridge, and you haven't, you can't think of a local-ish example of that first floor really embodying, no?
Well, it, sorry, what?
That wasn't really your concept when it was built? You didn't feel that the building, you were asked to incorporate these features that would allow the first floor to be activated? You hadn't been given that charge before?
In fact, sometimes the opposite. The ground floor of these buildings is so valuable for science because, for code reasons. You can do things on the first, in the first 65 feet that you can't do in other parts of the building that has to do with chemical storage, basically. And so the ground floor is so valuable in the development world that the dedication of space to retail is, has a negative revenue impact. It's negative to the developer's pro forma. And it's, you know, again, it's all about, it's all about what you, the priorities of your agenda. If your agenda is, we want to make a great place because a great place will benefit everybody. It will bring more people, it will bring more Navarrizes, you know, it will bring more of that kind of activity, it will enhance collaboration and interaction. Then you say, okay, I'm willing to say I'm not putting science on the ground floor, I'm putting things that are common ground on the ground floor. And I got to tell you, that's a very uncommon, unusual charge in the development world because it doesn't, it doesn't flow to the pro forma.
Also, I would suggest that in David's defense on this, David serves his clients very well. We have, and he is right, the science importance of the lower floors are critical for a good underlying building. So there is a trade-off between what science happens and what retail happens, as you do this. We have started this planning process with that as a paramount goal. The retail components, the whole notion of activating 75% of our ground floor. We spent an enormous amount of time with people who have developed retail. We looked at so many different spaces. We had opportunity to spend enormous time with the leadership of the people who did Quincy Market. We looked at Portsmouth and Hampshire, Newburyport, all these interesting places, Harvard Square, places where it wasn't the, it wasn't the City Hall Plaza in Boston where it developed. It was intimate spaces, interesting spaces, mix of old and new, always getting your interest about going around the next corner. And we were cautioned by many of these professionals, not necessarily in the architectural trades, but in the development of retail and placemaking, that the mix and the dimensions have to be carefully thought out and then not always these large spaces. The ones that have been successful have been more interesting and diverse. And if I look through over time where I've gone myself and enjoyed places, they have been these interesting quirky places. And we're trying to, in the organization of space, recreate some of that. Which is actually why some of these historic buildings are very interesting and some of the new spaces complementing them and the way, pathways that connect through. I think we have an amazing diversity of opportunity to create different types of spaces throughout this district.
So another quick question, that's about The Grove Place, was it, in Los Angeles?
Just The Grove.
Grove. So you were given the charge of focusing on the ground?
Absolutely. It's all about placemaking. It's about, it's about retail and restaurants. But LA is a city that lacks place in many ways. And this was all about making place, creating public ground on private property that would attract people for no specific revenue generating reason. But of course, the benefit is you attract people and, you know, it does generate revenue for all sorts of different reasons.
Okay. So then a quick question to the planning department. How did the first floor get activated?
Can you hold that for one minute, just because David has to leave? Ken has a quick question.
I realize I missed part of the discussion, but I do think, I just want to weigh in on the other side because I think the historic buildings in Kendall have been resuscitated as a plus. I really think Kendall, from this Boston Consulting Group study, that Kendall and the environments are a sort of the most innovative square around in the universe. Given the particular historic structures other than the one with the tower, I don't know why Kendall wouldn't just become a new place and an innovative place and a modern place. I'm somewhat discouraged to hear the discussion that some of these square-like places can be too large because I think you're referencing the wrong ones. The most successful one I've ever seen is the one that's around the Sultan George Pompey Do in Paris, where they go in and they have the fountain. It's always vibrant and there's no retail, it's a people place. So I don't know why, given all the intelligence at the table and the money, there isn't more creativity present in conceptualizing what we can have in Kendall Square. I mean, and through K2C2 and all of that, a vision has not appeared. And I'm almost feeling I'm being asked to vote on some volumes, but then someone who is creative isn't going to figure out a way to make a place there. But that's wholly lacking in this discussion. And I think when you get tied to these existent, nondescript, already raped buildings, it is really disheartening to anybody with a creative gene in them that that's the best that we can do given what the possibilities here are. So I don't know if I'm in the minority or the majority on this, but I absolutely know that tying whatever is new here to what exists now is going to give us nothing much. And if all of this is, it's nothing much, I wish I had an extra hour of sleep. Now, the other point, and Mayor Davis would help me with this, there's not a lot of discussion about how Central Kendall and Harvard Square radiate as three points of the city. And I'm fully convinced that each has a, is a personality of its own. But much of what the Kendall discussion has to be on is what is the personality of Kendall? And I got to tell you guys, for all the money that's at the table, no one, I mean, we've discussed retail, but this grander vision of, so we vote whatever and what do we get? It is no closer, it's a skeleton. And I'm beginning to worry about that because it seems to me we've been at this long enough to be able to come up with some notion that we're trying to, even if we were replicating something. But there is, it's just that, so the best of these pictures has a big circle on which God knows what happens and happens. My lady friend, Ruth Betts, when you say not good enough, I just don't know why we can't seem to get an actual vision of what it would be, either a campus thing or a square thing, but it's a void. And I agree, retail isn't the only thing. Now, the last thing I want to say is this, the one gift, goodie fancy brought, they said that Kendall Square needs 4,000 units of housing to keep vibrant and have people there. And people are, for me, the source of vibrance. But this entire proposal is not to bring more people. So that's sort of a disconnect, that's significant. If we had a lot more units of housing, we could see who might be on the plaza, but we're not bringing a lot more units of housing. Nor have we said that in the future that's our plan. So, you know, it, I will just revert to something I said at the time I visited your new location there, that it does seem that, I'm getting what that thing was I was going to say. I guess, I'm not fully convinced that we, oh, I know what I'm saying. You have some successful spaces at MIT, places like Killian Court, which I think are really underutilized. I'm hopeful that this end of the campus and of the city could really define a place more than these discussions have entailed. And I would want to not necessarily encourage that there's going to be a kind of faculty group that is now going to look at the issue of MIT's face because I'm not sure that some of the faculty-based housing that exists is necess, or not housing building as we go through this river thing and point out this was a faculty member, that was a faculty member. I'm not sure that's our solution either. I think we really do need one big creative mind to sort of say, here's what this could be.
One question, Mr. Chek. Counselor is kind of following here and sort of looking around the room. Did you really use the word raped buildings or did you say raped?
I said raped. What it is, the facades have been...
No, but raped is a term that is not used to describe physical buildings.
Counselor.
No, I'm trying to follow those words, I'm honestly...
They have been, what did he say in the central square? The historical something have been removed.
There's plenty of other words, stripped.
Stripped, okay.
Fine. I'm just asking you to please be sensitive that that is a word that most people don't use to describe buildings, to describe violent acts against people.
Well, I think stripped, it's controversial too, but I'm...
Well, I do think that there's a, there's not a difference here. I'm sorry, I wanted to follow, but I'm still just stuck.
I said the both terms that we have, they have been, the historic references have been removed.
Okay, clearly you don't want to acknowledge that I think it's an insensitive word.
That's not, well, I disagree with your analysis.
It's not my analysis, there's a lot of people who would be really offended by that. But I understand that you disagree with me.
I did draw my presence in the room.
I think that you are right. And I'm going to say that at this point, if the question isn't specific to David, we're going to let Mr. McFried, please.
No, it sounds like, I like this one, I think a lot of questions are being raised aren't so specific to the architect, I think they're being specific about the use.
Yes, yes. Go ahead. Thank you.
Can I just make one point? I like Counselor Reed's example of the plaza at Pompey Do. I think that, and it's great space and it's a big idea, and it's carved out of the city. And it's, one of the most fascinating things about it, a couple of fascinating things. One is the juxtaposition of some of the most extraordinary modern architecture against historic fabric. That's what strikes you as you lay in that square, you don't actually sit in it, you lay in that square. And also the program, it is an eventful place. You go there when you visit because you know that something's spilling out at Pompey Do that day. It always does, and it's programmed. And I think that's so important for what we're, what we want to do here is, create a space that is programmable and programmed every day. And as you know, we've been working with Dan Peterman, who's responsible for the program at Bryant Park. He literally says, every day, I can program this space every day. And I think that's absolutely essential to making great places.
If I could just say, what I find there is that the fact, because it is so, it's always moving, is bringing it draws people in. And I've never been there with anything from the Pompey Do Center that's still out. It's just that it's so interesting. I think a lot of people with small kids, bring them there because it's going to entertain them. And it's only an interesting thing. When we were building University Park, I mentioned to those folks that, you know, if you want to bring in people from Mass Ave, you have to have somebody back, something back there that people want to see. That didn't happen and you see what we got. So there have got to be some more creative ideas that we have seen about how you bring in people to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I have a number of questions. You know, I think the thing that Counselor Reed's alluded to is something that I continue to be concerned about, and I have several questions, is that, you know, when I did this tour well over a year ago and I walked around for three hours and sort of looked at the physical space of Kendall Square and looked at how it could actually be reoriented and looked at the possibilities of what could be developed there, and they were mostly not adequate possibilities. I found it really interesting. I found it really exciting. But I think the challenge is that we sort of saw this picture a number of years ago. And in fact, when I went down to the live models, I asked, are those the same pictures that you showed us? And at one point, it was being had this potential mother Kendall Hall, but something for Cambridge. I think my issue continues, this is a number of issues, but one of the issues I continue to worry about is really how, how do we know that this is going to be a vibrant space, not only through its design, but really through its use and the guarantees that we get with that? The other thing I have a question, the first I'm going to ask is to be, did I get asked for there to be prepared a list of a culmination of concerns we've been raising in public meetings? Do we have that? And are we using that as a basis for some of this conversation? I haven't heard it yet, but I was in and out earlier, so.
We've prepared this and we can share it with you.
Well, I think it's really important that we, this is our conversation amongst each other as councils, it's part of the best chance we can have as many of us here to really use that list and have a conversation amongst ourselves. I also have to say, I have a few things to say. One, when I did that tour a year ago, I found it really interesting. I still find it really interesting, what could be developed there? I'm not so committed that it has to be MIT academic use. I do have questions about what is the academic use that you foresee in the future and where do you foresee using that? I'm not so excited in you continuing to go out and sort of accumulate additional land because you then decide you need to do more academic programming. So I am concerned about sort of how we as a council look at the releasing of this land to non-academic use, which on its face, I don't have that issue with. And there's people who do, legitimately so. But I, I am concerned about sort of the guarantees that we're gonna get around sort of what additional space are you seeing that you need in the future? And where are you currently, what do you already own that you will use that on? I think the other issue that has come up here, thank you for this. The other issue that has come up here, just for people who don't know, I had asked at Monday's council meeting that CDD put together a list of all of the issues that came up in public comment about questions and problems that people have expressed with not wanting us to go forward, that we could have that conversation based on that as well. I also don't, on its face, I have a problem with there being, housing being built there that's not ours. I think the questions that the council have, the conversation is, there are some thoughts out there that somehow, if we, if MIT, one, that's not housing all those graduate students that it needs to, and there still seems to be some real debate about that. Two, that there are so many housing pressures in our neighborhoods, particularly in surrounding neighborhoods of Area Four, and maybe some of East Cambridge, and maybe Cambridge Four, that there's, there's that overwhelming number of graduate students living there, that that's part of the lack of affordability in the city. And I think it's important that we have intelligent conversations and debates about that, because intuitively, my response has been, I'm not convinced that if we were to remove all of the graduates in our neighborhoods into graduate housing, that somehow we would see a decrease, either a, a stag, a freezing of rents as they currently are, that they therefore wouldn't continue to go up in the future, or that that would make the housing market more affordable, or that people would continue to rent at the rates that they are, and even renting them to professionals who are doing, living together in twos and threes. So I think that's something here, I'd like for us, and I'd like for our housing people to chime in on that. The idea that housing would be built there is interesting to me, because it is one of the shortest ways that we expand for the housing. And that's not insignificant. And when I look at the number of units, based on what we now have under inclusionary, still 50 to 60 units is not insignificant. However, I will say that I am going to press, because I've said to people also, the good thing about MIT being the owner slash developer of this is that I actually have come to prefer, in some ways, some of the universities being the developer that I deal with, as opposed to a private developer. I think that there's more flexibility, there's more of a ability for the council to really have a say on sort of how things get shaped physically, and uses, and what gets there. And we're dealing with people who aren't flipping property and have issues with leaving us. So I think that gives us greater accountability. That said, I want to know that I'm actually gonna be looking at pushing for you to put more affordable housing there. This is an opportunity, if housing's gonna go there. And I do support the inclusionary model there. And you're certainly fulfilling that as the law currently dictates. But this is an opportunity also for MIT to step up and make a commitment to more affordable housing. I put a lot of pressure on Harvard over the last year. They continue to talk about their 2020 program that started 14 years ago, that delivered 10 million to the city of Cambridge, and 10 million to Boston. And they have said, well, that's our contribution, and I said, that is not enough. It was 14 years later. We then entered into negotiations where they actually made it possible for one of our nonprofits to buy Chatham Arms in Harvard Square by making sure that the land that they owned on that building was not leased to a private developer, making it a desirable place to invest in. And then I think what's really exciting is that Counselor Reed and I get to announce today that HRI is going to be the buyer of Tumon Auburn. Now, I'm still not happy about that, because that'll still mean that public dollars are going into the purchase of a building and the improvement of a building that Harvard committed to owning and maintaining. At least our legal understanding is, is in perpetuity, that's how it would develop. So now I'm looking at sort of the standards I'm gonna hold MIT to. And I really want you to see, this is an opportunity to really reinvest in affordable housing in Cambridge. And I'd like to see a much larger number than what I currently see. So that's sort of one thing. But I think the issue of sort of, you know, the demand, are there 5,000 MIT students that, you know, need to be housed by MIT? Should this be the place that we put them? I'm not sure I agree with that. But what, what is the graduate housing population and the folks here at MIT right now doing to the affordability of Cambridge? Do you know? Let's have conversations, and not sort of just throw them out there as it's true or it's not true. And then I would ask, I think Chairman Marr asked at the last ordinance meeting, I have asked you, and I have had my meeting with you last week, where is this additional land that you would use if in fact your housing study says that you need more graduate housing? Where is it? And then I also want to know, what you charge a graduate student, I'd like to know what the, what those comparable rents are. Because one of the other issues of that is if they don't rent, I think you're always kind of a population of graduates who don't want to live in graduate housing. And that's just sort of, that was my experience with a graduate student in the city. But then also, you may get, you may get affordable enough, and maybe they will change you, in fact, even if it's not their first desirable place. So I think what you charge for rent is really critical. I will also say, I just saw a group of our nonprofits walk in, and my son is staying a little bit here, because the other thing that's sort of floating out here is the community benefits package. And what I want to say, the conversations I've had, is that the community benefits package, for me, is never the deciding factor whether or not this is developed and we're gonna support. It does, what's being proposed makes sense for the city and our neighborhood, not sort of what is the cost of the sale of this development. So just even our nonprofits that are there. I know this in a variety of conversations with individual counselors, there is nothing on the table that is promising any nonprofit anything. What is on the table is, has been the number, and I believe 10 million is one of the numbers that I've heard, of dollars coming to the city. But it's still up for debate, I believe, is this idea of sort of who holds that bank check of that. There was one version which MIT holds, which I have said I absolutely do not support. Community benefits in dollars comes directly to the city. The city is in charge and elected to understand the needs of the community, decides how to spend that money, not MIT or any other developer. But also to just all of our nonprofits here, I want to appreciate all of the work you do, and your invested interest in how the city uses community benefits, which we have been deciding yet. We have agreed to get it together in two years, figure out how to use community benefits, because of our internal debate. But I want to be clear, that should not be in the middle of this debate, because this land is not for sale for community benefits. I, and in its face, I don't have intuitively a problem with the, this property being revitalized for commercial use and housing use, and not all going to academic and campus use. I really think the tax dollars that we will get from that becoming actually something which is nothing at the moment is interesting. The opportunity to build more affordable housing in market housing is also interesting to me. And so, and then I just want to throw out one final thing that, and then I hope that I'll come back and go into more of the issues that have been raised, as my colleagues as well. And then again, I want to thank you guys for putting this together. But that this notion of sort of how much housing is too much housing in our city, and I think that's something that CDD really needs to sort of have some thoughts on and reflect to us. You know, one report says we need 4,000 units, and other, other people are saying we need 5,000 units of graduate housing. The governor trying to build 10,000 units of housing throughout the state is not finding it easy to do. With that said, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, I hope they'll join me in my next council resolution, where I did challenge the governor, who says he wants to build 10,000 units of housing in Cambridge, yet we saw the courthouse in Cambridge go to a developer that has built in no housing. And my conversation with the governor has been that that may not be a done deal, and that we all need to weigh in on, if housing is something that many of us care deeply about. So, those could be some of the questions I initially have.
So if I can do two things, but if you can answer how you want to answer, but on the issue of the graduate housing, and the location of graduate housing is the first thing I ask you to do. And then I'm gonna ask the city manager to pick up on the issue that Monterey just raised about the tax implications, and then any other questions that were came up.
Are there any more comments? Were you talking about location, and maybe the study, and sort of that?
I think, if I just might phrase that just in a simple way, that, you know, the issue that's been raised repeatedly, that as you look at this PUD district, and so the mixed use that we're seeing here, of retail and commercial space with the academic use in the back, some folks have thrown out the question, why not all graduate students in housing? And I think that what Monterey's just saying is, is that, is this the right place? Where else on campus can graduate housing be built? And if that helps frame that question.
Yeah, it does. So, let me just make a few comments. So, you know, a number of my faculty colleagues have said to me, Marty, why don't you just build a large graduate dorms and be done with this? And I've been asking our institutional resources staff to really generate some data, which I fully anticipate Chancellor Clay's working group is gonna really delve into and think about this. But I actually put together a set of information for the faculty forum out on campus this weekend, and decided to write it up in the form of a memo, which I can share with you. But let me just, oh, sure, let me just say a few things, which is that... There's sort of, we do a number of surveys of our graduate students. We, we track the lottery system for use of graduate student housing on campus. And just let me give you four points, and then I'll tell you why I gave you those four points. So, since 1998, we've grown our graduate student population by 19%. That's a, that's 1,020 new graduate students. 811 of those, of that increase, has been absorbed in the increase in on-campus housing. And so, the, the, the rest, the 200 or so, have moved off-campus. That's the increase in graduate students outside of the campus. In 2012, we were able to offer housing to 84% of the graduate students that asked to live on campus. And in 2011, we offered housing to 91% of the graduate students who requested to live on campus. We also do a survey, the 2011 survey, we asked graduate students that live off-campus, what are the top two reasons that were factors in their decision to live off-campus? And more than 50% have indicated that they wanted to live away from MIT as one of their first or second reason. And lastly, if you ask them in general how are they satisfied with the availability of housing, 79% indicate they're either somewhat satisfied or very satisfied. Why do I bring this information up? Not to suggest that there isn't an issue that we have to address, there is, but to suggest that the answer, I think, is nuanced. And that, and that putting all of, or establishing all of our housing structure for graduate students on campus may lead to empty beds. And so, that's why we've placed a lot of importance in the working group, this Chancellor Clay is gonna be leading. And in particular, I want to acknowledge Counselor Chung's work with Professor Clay, because I think this identification of liaisons in the city, I think is gonna help ensure that whatever we develop in terms of recommendations for housing is sensitive to its impact on the city. So I'm excited about that. It's a new model for us. I'm optimistic that we're gonna develop some, some good solutions there.
Let me, let me complement this on the issue of where that may go. Because I think clearly this frames that the answer from Professor Clay in the working group will be very important in determining where that may go. But what's important to us as guiding parameters for our planning purpose is that in the past 10 to 12 years, we have invested in building housing on the west end of the campus. As you know, we have built all these beds in the basically Cambridge Port area and the west side. And that's an area that we, we have strong interest in keeping developing for several reasons. One of it is that we want, we have a strong interest in strengthening the community, the living community and the residential community that we have in forming, both for the undergrad students, as well as the graduate students and visiting students that are housed on the west. The third one that we have heard here is that the parcel and what we're looking at at Kendall Square has an enormous value to our science and technology mission driven for MIT, both for academic uses, as well as for potential commercial uses. And we have an interest in preserving as much as possible the capacity in that area for those uses. Having said this, then, if we focus on the west, we have a significant development capacity for residential purposes. And let me just highlight a few ones. A particular one that's an interesting and intriguing one for that is what we call the West Gate Lot. This is a parking lot together by the West Gate units. There's a tall unit in the semi tower by the end of Vassar Street. That would be a perfect area for a potential housing need. And again, it all depends on what the housing study may or may not give us in terms of what types of units, the balance of units, and if they need or not an increase on development capacity. We have several parcels along Vassar Street, towards the end of Vassar Street, towards the west and Memorial Drive, and there are also interesting potential sites for residential development for our student housing. And certainly in Cambridge Port, there's had been the Sydney Pacific Development, and the new Washington House of graduate students have been placed, as well as a renovation of the warehouse building. That's another area in which we are building the infrastructure for the campus. So from a planning perspective, and from an interest in developing those residential communities, that keeps being an area which we have development capacity there by the end of the athletic fields, and then north towards Cambridge Port. The other aspect moving to the east, and we're very happy to preserve, and also have some incentives thanks to the planning board of building housing on the east on the PUD 5 district, is that what we have preserves our flexibility, that if the work of the working group determines that that more housing or a different type of housing is needed at the east part, maybe actually an attractive area, we could build housing there as well. But so, so from a planning and from an institute perspective, we feel served with the land and the capacity we have to build residential if we are working to be, based on the demands and the analysis that Professor Clay will, will deliver to us.
About rents, about cost?
So on the, on the cost side, we are working on having a comparable analysis, because part of the, the difficulty in this comparability is that the offer that we have is, let me call it an all-in offer, with lots of services included in the rental price. So what we want to work with that is that the level of pricing for each one of the units needs to be in a way unbundled, for really comparing with one bedroom studios in Cambridge that may or may not include cable and other utilities. So that's, that's work that we have ongoing.
Mr. Chair, for you, I guess my question is, if you could just be a little bit more direct. If I'm looking at renting a two-bedroom in Cambridge in the private market versus renting a two-bedroom in graduate housing, which one's more affordable for me? Assuming, let's assume no cable, no, not, which is not really... Can you direct answer? Is it more affordable to rent in the private market in Cambridge? I can't imagine, but I'd like to know what the difference is. But I suppose that contributes to how graduate students decide where to live.
Sure. I don't know if you, I don't have the data that here available for me to tell you that. But the two-bedroom in Cambridge, I've been really worried in Cambridge, looking at. The two-bedroom in Cambridge is close to the campus, which would be our kind of comparable. I do believe it's more affordable to be at MIT.
Okay. I would ask someone to get that information to me before we leave today, because I would have to think that that's something that, if it were really that much of a difference, that somebody here would know that. So I'm sure it's not a part of what you were looking at, that somebody has to know that.
I'm gonna just ask Bob to just pick up on the tax implications, that issue that was raised in the, in the, you have done some analysis there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, in keeping with a longstanding tradition. I do not do zoning, but I do do revenue projections. And I do want to say that, in addition to all the important items that are being discussed here, that this project certainly has the capacity to provide an additional tax base for the city that will standard in Goodstead in the years to come. I guess the council knows MIT is currently our largest taxpayer, paying 11.5% of all the commercial taxes. Their annual tax payment to the city currently is $36.5 million. If you look at this project with estimates, and I believe Paul is handing out a very simplified sheet that shows the current value of the properties that are under consideration for rezoning, estimate the value of the property were to be rezoned, and what it would pay on taxes, commencing with a valuation that's probably have Steve collapsing on 1114. The new value on vacant parcels would kick in, and then the new value as built out essentially would add $10.5 million to the $36 million in taxes that MIT now pays on full build-out. With that in perspective, that more than funds the entire Cambridge Police Department for the entire year, if you take the operating budget, if it were all to come. for the entire year, if you take the operating budget, if it were all to come from taxes. So from a fiscal financial stability perspective, clearly there is huge advantage. That $10.5 million comes on an annual payment. It's not the community benefits numbers being described, and certainly under discussions, I just want the council to be aware that there are, this project, besides all of its other benefits, allows the city to feel comforted with what would be the new growth in valuation each year for the next several years. And I think those of you who have sat through the October discussion about setting the tax rate, you know that new value is the single largest component of keeping the residential tax rate down. So I have the information passed out in a very simple form, that clearly from a financial perspective is an advantage in all the other issues that the council must wrestle with as they do zoning, you will wrestle with, but I wanted you to see the financial implications. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair?
I can't, hang on one second. Madhuri, I don't, I have Minka and then Lee.
I was going to continue my question about the activation of the first floor, but since you presented now some interesting information, I wanted to take the opportunity to ask you questions about it specifically. But just one quick thing, does this include an estimate of personal property that would be within the buildings? So is that included, or is this just for the value of the buildings?
This is value of vacant land initially, which will be the value of the buildings as they are built out. I didn't hear.
But it doesn't include an estimate of the personal property within the buildings?
No, that's not, certainly there's potential for growth in the personal property, but I don't know if there's any way to estimate that.
Okay. And this is just for the so-called seven parking lots that are currently being used? I mean, it's just that cursory of a look at what can be...
That's correct.
It's going to be, okay. So One Broadway and usually, okay. And does it take into account the fact that in the petition, if the building that was built as a commercial building, if seventy-five percent of it becomes used by academics, then the whole building gets off the tax roll? Did you factor that in here?
No, the assumptions here are up for all of the FAR that's permitted on these parcels would be in commercial, twenty percent residential, and eighty percent of the total spec, which would be commercial, that is not an academic discount.
And it's all taxed at the commercial rate?
Twenty percent, eighty percent commercial, twenty percent residential.
So the institutional, oh well, okay, okay. It's a lot of money. I don't have any more questions, but I just want to, if anyone else has questions about this particular issue, otherwise I'd go back to other questions that I have on different topics.
Go ahead and ask the question, because I think that Council Chung, who is next, is necessarily pertinent to this.
Well, I'm just thinking, if other councillors have questions about this specific piece of the commission?
Just go ahead.
Okay, good. So then I want to go back to the activating of retail, because as Council Dicker so eloquently said, that's kind of one of the exciting pieces that comes to the people of Cambridge, as well as the students at MIT. So as far as I agree with zoning ordinance itself, they're really, the attempts in the zoning to create, to activate the first floor have to do with seventy-five percent of that storefront has to be retail restaurants. That's one tangible thing that's in there. There has to be an entrance to the sidewalk, that's another tangible thing that's in there. And they have to have a consultant, so that will help in with retail. And then it lists what the active uses would be, consumer museums, exhibit space. Is that enough? Because, you know, we sort of hear that the goal is to do that, but we also heard from Mr. Manfredi that it's, you know, there's going to be a tension between the actual cost to the developer in terms of loss of revenue, if it's one use versus another use. So are those pieces enough to really make this happen?
Well, they're not necessarily enough to guarantee that this will be the fabulous place that we all want it to be, but it is, it is the extent to which zoning can go to that end. So this, so zoning, we can require that a certain kind of space be created, or that it have a certain kind of characteristics. But what happens after that is something that is very hard for zoning to control. So that is part of the piece that is included here, which is not that common in zoning, is the notion of having the consultant who will do a close look at tenanting and sort of curating that detail. So that's, we've only done it once before with Dallas area, that's unusual, but it pushes the...
That's also enforced to be.
Enforced, yes. It sort of pushes beyond a lot of what zoning can do.
But one of the things that zoning could do would be stipulate the size of the unit. So for instance, one of the problems might have been, the reason that it took so long to get a Monza and the Vision Galaxy in there, who knew that we'd get such great tenants in there, was because the spaces are so huge, and there wasn't really a willingness to, you know, work with that. And so I would hate to have all this, especially around One Broadway, all this retail first floor available, but the space is too huge for it to really get used the way we all planned to do. So that seems like something you could put in the zoning.
There is, the guidelines speak to a diversity of retail sizes, and there's also a carrot version in the zoning, which is that ground floor retail can be exempt from counting towards GFA if it meets certain constraint, square footage requirements. And so that will get to the small floor plates, because I think that, you heard about the financial offsets that happens in the pro forma of the project. So for a developer, if they are committing to build retail, it is in their interest to try to avail all of the possible benefits that they can get or the offsets from counting towards GFA. So my assumption would be that MIT would attempt to build small retail storefronts so that they can utilize that GFA exemption.
I just want to point out that it didn't really work in Central Square, around the Central Square Theater. It didn't work for all of them.
We didn't have that particular provision in effect in Central Square.
I might also add, in Central Square, we had an overriding constraint based on some historical considerations that really forced the building to be developed the inverse of what we might have wanted to do in terms of creating street front presence. We really had a lot of space in the back and very little space in the front, which was really a challenge when we came to it. We were focused on developing that site in the Central Square Theater, and that became a real challenge in the way that we were trying to deal with the star pieces and try to create that. In the end, the retail was sort of factored in as best we could. This, I think, we started with the absolute opposite end. We started understanding that retail. And I think, you know, both Council Reeves and I think President Decker mentioned some of these points as well. I think, going back, we started with this retail being critically important, the gateway becoming critically important. And I think our sense of this is that there isn't one big step here. It's a series of incremental tangible steps that we're going to have to do to make this place interesting and exciting, I can go through it. I'm confident there are many ways that we can do this, and we still have a lot of creativity and insight that I think will come from some of the study that we'll do around that area. On the retail side itself, and I applaud the focus on that, because I think from the very beginning, that's been pushing us to think more deeply about how this space works. And our discussion, again, with some of the retail consultants and some of the retail developers who have been very successful creating these spaces, have cautioned us about being, you know, just cockroach and wiping out certain areas, sort of like urban renewal, to try to create one big new thing, because it often doesn't work. On the retail side, I think, here, I was just talking about a variety of incentives that are in there. I think, you know, we are thinking about ways to make sure that this retail is vibrant and diverse. That is clearly an area that we've had ample conversations with a number of you here and the community. Our sense of it is that we'll create a variety of smaller spaces here, we'll have to think about how to give you more comfort around that. I think we have spent, we're going to end up having more uses to put in the space that we will fit. I can already see that. We have more ideas than they have spaces to fit in. We're looking for, frankly, no sin crannies to fit some of these wonderful ideas in. So I'm overconfident on that. I have to give you some sense of comfort around that, and I appreciate that, because I think it's a legitimate concern. And we're going to have to try to balance that without trying to be so prescriptive that we end up having sort of the committee design divorce as we go through this. I think the reorganization of One Broadway down the Broad Canal offers great opportunities, and I'm really excited about the opportunities around the gateway, because I think Matt Mayor has talked about that Site Two in particular. We pulled some of that back and opened that up, and how we treat the T-stop. At one point, we thought, let's move it into the building. No one was, hey, why don't we make that sort of the newsstand area where make it much more transparent and make it so that it's active there and contributing to the retail beside it? The key for us is to open those spaces up today. You know, if the press building stays, which, you know, it could go in a various direction, but if it did stay, at the very least, that grade has to come down, ground floor has to come down, and all the space that you see has to be open. Today, it's one little entrance that's probably three feet wide, and a couple steps. It's terrible the way it's organized today. So we have to think about that type of intervention on that building if it stayed, and there may be other plans that envision without that building there that enable us to create, you know, some indoor/outdoor spaces with new and old tying into the Rebecca's building. And I've seen enough stuff that I'm confident that we can do it your way. I think it, you know, it is sort of an Article 19 design review. It's very granular. And the challenge we have is we have images of visions and ideas, and everything from, Council Reeves talked about, you know, some of the exciting stuff you've seen, whether it be Partridge, but even like Millennium Park, the Plensker fountain, which is one with the interactive, you know, vision on it, test faces, and the funk comes out. Those are really exciting. I can envision that type of activity happening, whether that be on the side of the building or in the central gathering spot, or above the T-endhouse, or... So there are many ideas out there. I don't think we'd all agree on any single idea, but there's such an opportunity set that I'm convinced we can incorporate so many interesting ideas, this will be a reconfigured place.
Okay, thank you. And I know you focus on MIT and the retail that you're thinking about there, but, you know, I'm thinking about all of Kendall Square. So there's plenty of retail, the Pfizer up on further down Main Street, you know, the Volkey, who knows what's going to happen there. Boston Properties is doing quite a lot of new retail, they're building a whole other, almost like a little mini mall, that's what's under the wraps right now. So there's going to be a lot of space for all these ideas that when the public goes to your charrette tomorrow morning, they'll see all of your exciting ideas anyway. So that's, just wanted to point that out. I do, I still think that there's probably more that can be put in there to incentivize them to really make this happen more. I know the intention is there, but I don't want to take too much more time about that particular issue, because I do really want to talk through some other issues. I want to follow on with what Council Dicker said already about where is the housing going to be when the graduate study gets finished. And I think in Cambridge Port, in the area that you've brought up, that makes, I'm completely comfortable with that, I'm not sure that you would want to cram the graduate student housing into Kendall Square. I think that makes complete sense. But that being said, I really think that there should be much more housing built. And part of it is, I'm really focusing on the housing-to-jobs ratio, and I don't want that to get too much out of filter. And I know it's not a, you know, standard metric to use, but as I said before, I really think that it's part of why we've just been able to stay as vibrant as we have and as diverse in terms of the people that are living here. So in the zoning, there's a trigger. Once you build 600,000 square feet of commercial, you have to stop until you build the housing. So, and I understand why that's in there. I would like that trigger to be even further, because I think housing is that important to get in here. When you look at the housing map that was up there, you know, the gray dots jump out at you, and that's all non-commercial. So we are really priming upon for the jobs, which is fabulous, but the housing has to stay in line with that. So I would ask for that trigger to be looked at. Also, we haven't really talked about the innovation space that much. And to repeat what I said before, to me, this section, not, what you have around One Broadway, I'm completely comfortable with. I think that's fine there. What I'm concerned about is what's on the south of Main Street, because that, to me, is MIT's campus. And maybe I just spend too much time on MIT's campus and that is sort of a test, blazed in my brain. That is MIT's campus, and the fact that this section, I don't know what it is, 4.5, I think, that laid out different academic districts for Harvard, for MIT, for Leslie, you, MIT were given, not given, but this was created as an academic district for you, and now you're asking us to change that concept. So I want to make that point again. And the second point about the innovation space, and then another point I want to make is, in the Towne Down report, you're currently leasing 500,000 square feet of commercial space for academic uses. So you already need that much space. I don't know what the term of those leases is, but to me, it doesn't make sense that you want to build commercial space when you're using, leasing commercial space from other developers for your own academic purposes. You want to answer that?
Yeah, I can say that specifically, and then we'll just got the data on the responses for the four related questions we may share. On that 500,000 lease space, one thing that we've pointed out in the presentations on the Towne Down meeting is that north of 300,000 is actually the Grove Institute, for which MIT basically is on the lease also for that. So when you think about that amount of space...
That's really 200,000.
It's really 200,000. And I think Sosa Broshin has talked about how we use that lease space as a buffer, as continually for our needs that are up and down based on funding needs.
Okay. Well, it still stands, except it's a 200,000 square foot number, not a 500,000 square foot number. Thank you for that detail.
So if I may, I'll just share the information. Based on, thanks to Michael O for finding this out, on the September 2012 survey, boston.com created, the median monthly rent for a two-bedroom in Cambridge was $2,800. The rent at MIT, three rents, because we have different rents for different types of residences, at City and Pacific, this is the most expensive one, is $2,400. That's about 12% cheaper. This one is including utilities and cable services. At I've Don, the rent is $22.50, 20% cheaper. And at Tan, the rent is $1,576, or 44% cheaper. For one-bedrooms, the median monthly rent in Cambridge is $2,300. And at MIT is $1,200 and $1,500. So just that answers the affordability question.
Oh, sorry. I was just trying to catch Chris Goddard's eyes to say, can you confirm what you think the average?
Yes, some of the figures there, I believe, are cited from our website. That is the most recent survey that we completed on the rental market done last fall. We actually just took a sample, another sample, a few weeks ago, so we're working with that data, which should have some information, you know, maybe in the next week or so, as to what the rents have done. Over the last six months, we generally do the sample twice a year, the fall and the spring, as units start to become available on the...
as units start to become available on the summer, fall schedule. So that is that. We've certainly seen rents rising. I think we saw three-bedroom rents exceed $3,000 a month for the first time last fall. We're expecting that number to probably go up since that time. Two bedrooms were just below 3,000, roughly 2,800. Again, we expect that number to probably go up a little bit as well, given what we've seen happening with the rent market. And one bedroom is likely likely as well. Those figures, I believe, are from our website.
Where is the information gathered from, Chris? If you could explain?
Sure. What we do is we look at listings that are posted on boston.com. We also look at a sample, a daily sample of Craigslist. Trying to look at like anyone who doesn't have an into a law market unit, arriving in the city, how would you look at renting apartments? So, you know, the most popular way you'd find of, and apparently you're looking on the internet. So we're looking at Craigslist, we're looking at boston.com. We're going through, I think, roughly a thousand listings of Craigslist that have got some Cambridge lists in somewhere, pulling out the ones that are clearly on Cambridge. But as you just said about that. And then putting those asking prices together and coming up with a median number as to what the asking rent, asking price is by unit size. This is consistent with how we've been doing it for the last 15 or so years. About five or eight years ago, maybe. We started looking at more online, getting more listings from Craigslist.
And I just, I want to just pick up on this for a minute. That I think it's important to note, that doesn't mean that's what the average rate is in the city. But rather, that is what the average vacancy is being advertised for, which is a huge difference.
That's right. That's right. You know, it's really hard to get at what the average rent is because it's not data that's publicly accessible. Our approach is to look at like anyone looking for a housing unit would, what's available. What are they faced with when they're doing a housing search? Because those are the folks that we see coming in, talking to us, having trouble looking for units. And that's what's available. Certainly, there are a lot of tenants who are in smaller buildings that have got very dementia. Been there for a long time and, you know, it's hard to get that number.
And it would be awesome. And I'm not 100% sure how we can gather this information. But as a small property owner myself, you know, I know that, you know, I have been very lucky to have long-term tenants in my own house. I had a change not all that long ago and did what you just said. Went onto Craigslist and went onto boston.com and looked at. And I will tell you that from my own experience, the rent that people were getting, the actual rent that people were getting, was far different than what was advertised on those websites. And I think that's important. You know, and I'm thinking, I heard the gasps around this table when the 2,800 was stated. And I think the reality is, is that the rents are significantly lower than that. And I'm not sure how we can actually gather that information. But, you know, I saw, it's funny, I just saw a house that was advertised on Craigslist and it was a neighbor's. And I've been in my house many, many times. So I looked at the pictures and I said, it was up and in itself. So I kind of looked at it and it was advertised, I think it was a two-and-a-half bedroom. It was advertised at $3,200. And I know that they got 2,300 from the actual rent. So it was significantly less. And I think, I just put that out there as a cautionary note that those numbers are, especially with these websites and the, you know, we have hundreds of would-be realtors who think that their property is worth, you know, anyway.
Thank you. I also think, but I made the point is I want to know when people are looking for rents, what are they looking at? Whether it's a graduate student, private first, those are the things that they're looking at to get into the market, whether someone gets them. I'm going to guess they get pretty close to that because of my own antebildal knowledge. But what I also, I think what we've asked, two things that I haven't answered were, one, where would you build graduate housing? And if you need to build it. And two, the other question that I asked, I don't think was answered, was this issue of additional programming that you foresee that you need for in the future. I'd ask you about that as well. And that plays an important role in this discussion.
I will take the, yeah, I'll take the housing one.
Well, on the housing, what I say is that I think depending on the kinds of needs that the Institute and Professor Clay identifies, where is built or where the adjustments may need to happen, is going to depend on the types of outcomes of that study. But I have gone through that our preference today, based on some of the planning guidance we have, would be on the west end of the campus. I've identified the West Gate lot as a particular area of interest. There are certain properties along Bassett Street, including California Paints, that could be considered for housing. There are certain other properties side by side with City and Pacific and Number 35, New Ashland. So those would be ones that I think the Institute will look at as future development for residential student housing. So I think that that's basically the answer. We cannot specifically say this is the one, because I think.
But you would say that you own the property?
We own those properties. We have the capacity to develop housing.
Well, I just want to, this is a follow-up to that question. I still want to, I think the other thing that I'm going to be looking for in this zoning language is, because I'm sure it's hard, well, you must have, somebody there has an idea of what future space you need for programming and academic use. What I'm going to be looking for is not just an answer, but also something in the zoning that would actually trigger. If you require so much space for X number of square footages to develop for academic purposes and you do not build it on land that you already own, as of the date of this vote, if a vote takes place on this, then there has to be something that I think also triggers you having to go back to what it may be possibly this property. I just want to make sure where I've been really upfront with people about, both with MIT and with residents about that, you know, again, the face of this. I'm kind of excited about what could be there. At the same time, I'm also really listening very clearly to, you know, in the future, if there really is this need for such great additional housing and additional programming. I think somebody quoted to me that they see that MIT needs, was it 500,000 square feet a year of growing space needs. And my response is, well, let's stop, you know, cut the number of graduate students up and stop expanding your labs. And I don't think that one went too well either. But I think you can't have it both ways. So I'm just, for all the lawyer and the people here who are, who are working with them on the zoning and to community development, I want us to explore, is there the possibility bringing language that actually would trigger before the city would permit and before they would also agree to buy additional land, that we would look at the need or sort of if there's future need for additional academic purposes that they might have to actually go back to something that they already own. And again, I know I'm just fleshing this out right now for the first time. But it's something that I want to have a, a more informed conversation that will probably be better understood when someone else is talking about it besides me.
All right. If I can just say, then.
Go ahead. So thanks for the question. I think we have the start numbers for the growth of campus space that we could share. And we have a sense of the capacity of the sort of open parcels on campus and have the confidence that those lines give us decades of capacity for if we continue to historic expansion of the campus. We undertook an exercise in 2008, 2010 to assess our most pressing academic needs. And that led to the identification of five projects. A nano facility, a facility for our environmental research, a facility for music and theater arts, a renovation of space for math, and a renovation of space for Sloan and Economics. Of those properties, or of those projects, three, possibly four, are going to be renovations of existing buildings. And what that speaks to is the fact that we face an enormous deferred maintenance problem on campus. And our attention needs to be focused on reinvesting in our existing buildings. And that's sort of where the skew is. As far as the East Campus, it's the linkage between our management school and our science and engineering humanities complex. And as, while we have no immediate needs to put new academic buildings in that area, if we were in the future to put things there, my, beyond residential, my vision would be that it would likely be things that link those schools. So we have programs like our Asian Air Systems Division, which is a strong linkage between Small School Management and the School of Engineering. That's the kind of thing that I think you might imagine happening there. I think it's important to note that, I mean, the key premise behind this was that we were going to preserve the existing academic capacity in the East Campus. That's how we started. So it was, in order to do this, we required zoning changes before you to enable us to do the commercial, the retail, the housing, all of that part beyond the capacity that exists for academic future capacity, which we're reserving principally in three sites that we've identified in here, into this, into this space here that gives us, we believe, decades of future use in the East Campus. Marty has pointed out, gone through a fairly detailed study. And there wasn't a lot of uses that were targeted to this area in the short-term period. So us preserving that academic capacity was a key number one consideration for MIT to consider moving forward with the revitalization of Kendall.
Okay. So I'm just going to give folks a little update here. That Mickey is going to very quickly finish her comments. Then Leland, Craig, Denise, Marjorie. I am going to say that you just finished. Is that correct?
Correct.
Henrietta and Ken. So we have a full queue here of questions. Go ahead, Mickey.
So I was, I'm in the middle of talking about the commercial filled out, the 980,000 square feet, which I really don't think is appropriate. But it sounds like most people don't seem to have a problem with that. So one of the things that I mentioned before that's so critical to why Kendall has been successful is this, the innovation spaces. And these are not what you would think. They're just little places scattered around that are disappearing now with the, you know, large buildings and the consolidation. So the 980,000 square feet of commercial is most likely to go to big players that want to come in to get the Kendall Square magic that comes mainly from MIT. And I really don't think that the 5% innovation space is anywhere near adequate to keep Kendall Square the innovation, the innovative place that it is. So I mentioned this in a little one-on-one meeting, I'm sure it was like a one-on-eight meeting that I had. And, you know, I think that a minimum of one-third of the commercial space that you want to build should be devoted towards this shared small space that's what we're calling innovative space. And I think that will go a long way towards maintaining this exciting entrepreneurial spirit that is in Kendall Square. So that's one point I want to make. We haven't talked about sustainability. I don't know, I don't want to just keep on talking, but, you know, it seems like, it seems like there are more things in here. For instance, there's a cogeneration is something that isn't allowed use in this district. And that's something that MIT has done really well. And, you know, I would be willing to even grant exemptions for that GFA in order to have the co-gen be located right there in that PUD. So there are lots of details that still need to be worked out. And I don't know, it still seems like it's a 50,000 square, 50,000-foot discussion as opposed to, you know, what about section 13, point this, point that? And that still hasn't really happened. There's a lot, there are a lot of exemptions in here that MIT has requested in this petition. And it's hard for me to kind of list them into a table. There's the retail exemption, which I think we all agree is a good thing. But there are other exemptions for height. And I still think somehow we need to have a discussion about exactly getting a handle on those things. The community benefits was touched on. That section needs an awful lot of work. I don't know how we can proceed with this whole petition since it is an integral, I don't know if it's an integral, but it is a part of the petition. So that part needs a lot of work. It's probably not going to happen in this context. And then, of course, there's all the building that's going on in all of Kendall Square. And MIT is a huge piece of it. But, you know, those gray circles are really clustered in this part of Cambridge. The gray, I'm referring to the, to the non-residential buildings that are coming online.
I might go to comment on a few of them. Certainly, on the innovation space, I would say, you know, I think we're very proud of the work we've done in innovation space in Cambridge. We started doing some innovative stuff regarding small suites in 1999, well before. A lot of discussions that we could focus on innovation. And we've spent a lot of time building that type of space. And it's not, you know, today, you have One Broadway, we have probably 700 entrepreneurs working. And it's such a delicate ecosystem that it's important that the venture capital firms that supply the capital, that a lot of these entrepreneurs start up are located close by. We've spent great deal of time to attract a number of these back into Cambridge environment. They've gone up to Wall Fair number. You know, we've had the success of bringing, you know, a number of them back home. Particularly in One Broadway, Highland Capital and Charles River Ventures have moved back. The other notion of this is, even if we have 700 entrepreneurs today and there in the office space, we think that's actually a pretty good mechanism. As we speak, we are breaking ground on new space in Lab Central, which is a new experiment that we've been working years to try to figure out how to do the same thing in laboratory environment, which is a much more complicated vehicle because there's a lot more sort of regulatory challenges in that. And that is about 30,000 square foot of space that we're implementing at 700 Main Street today. And that's a very exciting prospect. But beyond that, it's a continuum here. And I think we've got to be really careful about how we manage this because when one of these 700 people or one of these small lab setups that may have three or four people working on it becomes successful, they move to the 2,500 square foot suite, or the 5,000 square foot suite, or the 10,000 square foot suite. And you have to contrast that entire continuum with a Novartis that's a million square feet. And so I think even the Novartises and the Fisers and the Sanofi's have all established venture capital arms. They're providing capital to the startups. They are licensing the technology. So this ecosystem that we have of large, small, and medium is really delicate and frankly, still being understood by all of us. So we want to make sure that we don't, in this point in time, freeze that through a zoning mechanism that's so prescriptive that we actually end up being anti-innovation. So we totally get it. We spend so much time on this. Today, we're building some spaces even down at 640 Water Drive that are intermediate-sized suites, something like 5,000 square feet for a lab company. That would be a failure, that would probably be a second stage after an entrepreneurship, entrepreneur company comes out of Lab Central, would probably look to that next stage of growth. The other thing that does happen in sort of the 10,000 and 20,000 square foot range for some of these enterprises is, these emerging companies are forecasting growth. They may need 20,000 square feet. They're only using 10 when they start. You know, they want their space in one location. So they'll turn around and sublet to the smaller users, the remaining 10,000 square feet on short-term leases. So that helps facilitate a financing mechanism for these startup companies. The committee use the space and as they equal success, they can then grow low to other places. So it really is a collection of mechanisms that are happening. So it's not just the small spaces. But I think we are very tuned in to all of those. And Councilors, you've been, you've been pushing us on this and I think we recognize it. We, you know, we are looking at ways to improve what we're doing here. But I would caution that there is a very organic ecosystem that is working with this innovation prime. So we will be looking to respond and to improve some of that, of course.
I know there's a long list of people on deck, so I'll try to be a little faster than the previous speaker. I'm just teasing. I think, maybe, the company is going to raise some great points. I share the concern of the ratio of jobs to housing that was first, should recognize was first brought into the council by Brian Sumitako and the graduate student council of MIT, the first to present to the council on that ratio. And I think the CDC has done a lot of, in the discussion side, had a lot of thinking about, about that ratio across the rest of the Kendall Square district. Regarding the innovation space, I also want, I think Steve was learning that no W B goes unpunished. I think we should, it's important to recognize that, I'd say, I think a lot of the innovation space that we're asking for here, you know, was piloted and created and made possible by your team at Mutenka. I think that, I just want to say, I do keep, I do recognize, I'm keeping that in mind. I think, you know, my pushing on the number is not so much, it's not at all, I think, a concern that you're. concern that you're not going to continue that same commitment to entrepreneurs and innovation space that you've, uh, like, been a leader on in Kendall Square, but, uh, more importantly, that we're setting a precedent here with, uh, this MIT petition that will then, uh, carry through as we look at the rest of the PUDs and zoning that we're going to consider as part of larger, uh, occasion planning process. Uh, and I think last thing, I would diverge, uh, from Councilor Beasley's point on the campus, uh, planning, whether or not we should be putting commercial on, uh, south of Main Street. You know, I, as a reasonable mind, I have very, very strong opinions, uh, but I think it's not necessarily the council's purview to be saying what should be done. I think that, I encourage, you know, people that have that opinion to lobby, uh, MIT, the MIT administration, to tend to go directly. Uh, I think that is an important thought that we have. I worry about, uh, the council starting to get involved in saying, we'll put this here and that there. You know, MIT, uh, I would like MIT to come to that consensus and decision on its, on its own. Um, I think I'm more worried about the, you know, bill form and how you interact, how the decisions that are made interact with the rest of the city, more so than trying to manage what you're doing on, on your campus. To Councilor, uh, Doctor's point, I agree on the, uh, on the need for global housing. Uh, I think that she raises a great point on the price, uh, being an important, uh, deciding lever. My own act of the hand of others has been that, uh, the classics, I know, some are in much more expensive houses, uh, apartments, and some are in much cheaper houses. But, uh, the price that's listed, uh, on the website, when you, you first get admitted to MIT, you go and you say, well, what's the options for on campus housing? Uh, and then you go to Craigslist and see what are the prices, uh, and even though we're looking at the median, median, median price list in our presence, there are, uh, lower prices that people can then go after. Uh, I think that does affect the rate, the percentage of, of students that are looking for housing, look to get into the MIT housing. Uh, so I think, I think that, like you said, 80% of those that request it, or get, or afford in housing, uh, that number is driven by pricing that is, is quoted on the website. Um, and I agree with Councilor Reeves, uh, on the, uh, idea of place-making, uh, the reason I started the English question about the 110 feet of, of space between, uh, the headhouse and the expedition building, and how much space you need to make a vibrant location. Uh, but I will say that with Jesse, um, retail team, uh, the thoughts around place-making, uh, are so much better than they were two years ago. Uh, it's, it's been, it's a radical improvement. Um, I think it's at least heading in the right direction. Uh, getting back to, I think that, you know, I've talked previously last time around about grocery store, uh, and I think that I'm pleased with that message. I think you've gotten the message around the grocery store, and I think that I'm beginning to, um, continue to harp on that. Uh, another point I will make, is that I really like, you know, the throwaway, but I think, you know, the lackish, I really, I'm really okay with the lackish between, uh, MIT Sloan and, uh, the economics department back to the rest of campus. You know, there's a speed tunnel system that can get pretty much taken from 77 all, all the way to, uh, the MIT Media Lab, if you could extend that over to Sloan, that'd be great on those cold winter days. Um, and then, uh, that's those comments. And then, I would also make a comment to CDD, in the, to be, to be asked for when we come back with the campus for zoning guidelines, we like some language around things. Um, and we did this for North Mass Ave, but limiting the overall frontage of things, I think, uh, is nearly exceeded the design guidelines that MIT has already, uh, agreed to, to conform with in their, in their plan. Um, and then a question for the manager, I don't think he's left, but, um, there's not so much question, but ask for information back. On the commercial proposal for, uh, petition, I gave the numbers for, um, for the taxes that we come back to the city. What I would like to know is, the pilot agreement with MIT says that if commercial land is converged to academic use, the tax, the high tax, the payment loop tax is falls off, uh, over the course of three years. Uh, with that, you know, given that this is a pretty significant amount of, uh, of zoning and, uh, taxes that are going to be, being received from this property, uh, you know, does that three-year, does that still give us enough offer, uh, to maintain fiscal stability in the city? Or should that three years be five years, uh, for this increased portion? Uh, so those are some of the comments I wanted to throw out there, and I want to look for response to, to try and keep this short. But the next question I wanted, the question I wanted to ask, I was very grateful to have you from the planning board here. Uh, I've been thinking a lot about, uh, housing, and how do we talk to CDD about how do we get more housing into Kendall Square? Uh, there aren't a whole, uh, you know, there's only been one housing site that's been identified, that MIT wants to pursue for housing in this, uh, in this petition. Um, and I guess my, in the housing site, they, so how do we get more housing? We want more for housing. I'm really excited about this middle-income housing that we're planning, but that middle-income housing is only above 250 feet. Uh, and so we're in, currently, the, uh, the thought was that 300 feet should be the limit. So we're only getting really 50 feet of this middle-income housing. And understanding that, you know, height is really a, uh, you know, it's a council, it's a council, uh, policy decision that we set what the overall envelope should be, and what, you know, FAR and what height should be. Uh, so I acknowledge that, you know, that also, you can say that this is ultimately a, uh, something that the council needs to decide, amongst itself, that it drives back to the planning board. But we'd love to hear your thinking around, well, you know, for trying to get more for housing, you have one for housing site, how high can we go? Um, could we get to, you know, the John Hancock Building is 800 feet. I think it's probably a misreaction whether or not we should have a building that values that-
Is today's headboard.
Totally, this English building. Uh, but how, how does the council, uh, think about how, how we can make that number? And also, I think, noting that, uh, within the zoning guidelines, it's said that, um, any height is reviewed by the planning board. Uh, you know, that includes, like, doing the shadow study and the study of how to impact neighboring buildings. Uh, but I would like to get as much of for housing and as much middle-income housing as we possibly can. Uh, and it seems to me that increasing the height, uh, and this is a one of us for that, you know, it's only this one building on the drawing board, this seems a hard task opportunity to do that. So I guess that's kicking over to you for your thoughts, uh, and, 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 thanks.